I would like to call the March 2nd, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting to Order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty to each other, with all.
That is nice. Please call the roll.
Topfest.
I'm here, thank you.
Smithwick, Ailey, Anderson.
Here.
Burton.
Here.
Baba.
Here.
Are there any changes to the agenda? Are there any objections to approve in the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. This is the meeting minutes for February 20, February 2nd, 2022, our last meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes? We've all read and letter by letter made sure it's all correct. Are there any objections to approve in the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. There are no presentations with prior notice, public hearings, or unfinished business. There is some new business. Resolution PZ 2022-004 recommending approval of the Business Center subdivision 2022 replat. May I have a motion to approve?
I motion to approve resolution PZ 2022-004.
Awesome. May I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. May we have the staff report, please?
Staff report starts on page six of the printed packet. The applicant, Johnson surveys on behalf of BEEZ LLC submitted the application on February 4th, 2022. The proposed preliminary plat for the Business Center subdivision 2022 replat intends to transfer .499 acres from Lot 3A to Lot 1. Currently, Lot 1, which is parcel 05934057, is developed with medical offices. Tract 3A, which is parcel 05934063, is vacant. These parcels are in the commercial zoning district along with the parcels immediately to the north, east, south, and west. Also to the north lies unincorporated land with no zoning. Legal access to proposed Lot 1A is gained by the Kenai Spur Highway. Legal access to proposed Lot 3A1 is provided by a portion of Night Drive, which is platted, but is not built to Kenai Peninsula Borough standards and is not maintained by the city. Lot 1's medical office building at 35670 Kenai Spur Highway currently is served by parking that extends across the property line is tract 3A. Saldana Municipal Code 1710330 requires that parking be provided on the same lot as the use it serves or on an adjacent parcel with a cross parking agreement that is written and recorded with the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Kenai Recording Office. This replat would correct the off-street parking and loading area by expanding the size of the parcel so that the parking area that serves Lot 1 is solely within Lot 1A. Municipal water and sewer are provided to tract 1, and both municipal water and sewer are available to Lot 3A. The preliminary plats for Lot 1A and Lot 3A1 meet the minimum lot size, width, coverage, maximum building height, and minimum yard setbacks listed in Section 1710265 of the Saldana Municipal Code for the Commercial Zoning District. The plat was circulated for city staff to review, and we did have a comment from our utility manager, Mike Allen. He stated that the sewer manhole and utility boxes depicted on the preliminary plat are not owned by the city. They're privately owned, they're owned by the lot or by the medical offices. And you can see this on Figure 4 of the staff report on page 10 of the packet. The service lines that were constructed, and these service lines are viewed on page 9, the service lines that were constructed to connect to city water and sewer mains were not to city standards, and they are private. And that's Figure 2. The city's water main terminates prior to proposed Lot 1A, and that's in Figure 3, so this bottom figure. So the city's water main terminates prior to proposed Lot 1A. And so Mike Allen also said that the existing sewer line, manhole, and lift station located on Lot 1A connected to the city sewer do not comply with city standards, and the city's sewer main terminates prior to the proposed Lot 1A. The city of Saldana does not maintain nor is responsible for any improvements or maintenance on the existing private utilities. As these private utilities are not necessary to the replat and may cause confusion to ownership, a request to have those depictions removed from the preliminary plat is included in the resolution. 19 public notices were mailed on February 8th, 2022. No comments have been received at the time this report was drafted. So staff finds that the preliminary plat for the Business Center subdivision 2022 replat meets the general standards for the Saldana Municipal Code and therefore recommends approval subject to the following conditions: that the depictions of privately owned utility boxes and the privately owned sewer manhole be removed from the plat. Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions for staff? My only question for staff is that this is this gray zone which other properties sort of have, they live, or they live, they exist within the city of Saldana or maybe a little bit outside the city of Saldana, and either they do or don't have access to city water. And so this is one of those pieces of property that's inside the city limits, but it is not served by municipal water and sewer. Is that correct?
No, sorry. So I'm sorry if I didn't explain this very well.
No, you probably did, I just missed it.
They do receive both city water and sewer.
Okay, okay.
The only thing is that there are private extensions from the main that connect from our water mains, our public water mains, to the service, these service lines. Those are not owned by the city.
Okay.
They're not of the same material or size that we typically use for our mains. And so even though they're pretty long, and that's also a little bit of an allegor, regularity for private services, and so we were just calling that out because on the plat, which this is unusual for plats to include, as you guys have seen quite a few plats now, we don't normally see, sometimes we don't normally see buildings, but let alone utility boxes and sewer manholes called out. Because they were called out, our concern was for there to be confusion that these were owned by the city when they aren't up to our standards and they are not owned by the city, they're private.
Okay. Yeah, so typically plats just have lot lines and they don't include these types of, I don't know, additional, whatever you call sewer into the ready lines.
That's exactly correct.
Yeah, the only thing I was worried about is if they were typically included, then having them in as many places as possible, just so that there wouldn't be any oversight would be good, but if it's not usually included, then all my questions are answered. Thanks.
And we had a debate whether it was better to have a note on the plat stating that they were private or just to remove them, and at the end of the day, John and Mike Allen decided that it was better just to remove it, to remove confusion because they're not normally seen on plats.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Public comment period, sorry, public comment period is now open. And Charlene, I don't want to, sometimes Zoom is tricky, so if you have anything to add, please just pipe in. For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you'd like to comment, and Star9 gets you on your telephone. But with no one wishing to speak, the public comment period is now closed. Are there any commission comments? All right, just call for the vote.
Topfest. Anderson.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
And Baba.
Yes. All right, if there are any other public comments without prior notice, now is the time, but we don't have anyone else online, so we're good. Reports, thanks for joining us. Member Chilson. Jordan.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So just kind of to update you all on some of the recent ongoings from the City Council back through the month of February. We've recently held two sequential work sessions during the last month as part of our ongoing efforts to find a replacement clerk for the city of Saldana. At this point in time, we have found one candidate, Sandra Modai, who is a former clerk for the city of Kenai, who we are currently beginning contract negotiations with, and hopefully we'll have a new clerk moving forward here in the near future. Also, as you know, we have, we previously submitted a grant to the Economic Development Administration to hopefully get some funding to go through the planning process for the riverfront area of the city. We are still waiting for a word back on that application, however, we are hoping to hear, hopefully, some conclusive news on that here in the next, I think, week or two, potentially. Additionally, we've recently passed a number of resolutions authorizing some larger expenditures for park development within the city, including $62,443 for Memorial Park landscaping, where we're going to be bringing in a contractor to put in a bunch of trees and shrubs throughout the park, $45,000 for new rubber mulch at Farnsworth Park. Additionally, we have authorized our city administration to begin an RFP process to try to find and onboard a grant consultant who'd be brought in as a consultant to do that writing on our behalf. And part of the reason we're doing that is there's just been this tremendous influx of federal funding opportunities over the last two years, and it's honestly kind of overwhelming how many opportunities are out there and just knowing, knowing of them, and then if you can even find ones that you want to go after, it's a fairly involved process going after a number of these grants. So just, I think there's a lot of benefit to bringing in someone who is familiar with the landscape as it currently is and can really help us potentially secure some pretty neat opportunities for the city while we have those available. Additionally, we recently had to appropriate another $85,000 for snow removal in the city because we blew through that budget pretty quickly this year with the tremendous amount of snow, and hopefully that should be sufficient to get us through the rest of the year. We have also, good news, last meeting, we have been approved for about $60,000 in total funding for forgivable loans, and this is, these are actually two $30,000 forgivable loans through the Alaska Department of Conservation and then also the Alaska Drinking Water and Clean Water Funds. And we will be using that $60,000 in forgivable loan funding to begin a new utility rate study, and I believe it's been a good number of years since we last did that, and our utility rates have been locked for a number of years. And I think this is something that the city has historically done over its existence, where just every so many years, we will do a very involved analysis of, you know, current revenue and expenditure forecasts and how we need to adjust our utilities to keep them fair, but also be able to cover the needs of the operations there. And lastly, at our last meeting, we did have our mini-grant application review for this half of the year. We had two applicants, and we ended up granting an award to Project Homeless Connect, and they had previously received this award in the past, and they're going to be using it again to purchase small gift cards. I believe they just get like little five or $10 gift cards for meals with local restaurants, basically just nice little tokens they can give people when they come to the homeless event, homeless connect event, and just make them feel that they are valued and welcome and give them some kind of little uplifting thing that we can do. So I was pleased to see that award happen. And that is all I have, Madam Chair, and I'd be happy to answer any questions to the body.
I have a couple.
Okay.
For the person who may come on as the consultant to help write grants, is there, I know we have lots of plans with lots of wish lists, and we have capital project budgets and such what, do they already have a list of things that they're going to try and get funding for, or is it just a wish list person in general, or?
Well, that's part of the reason that we're bringing them on is because we don't necessarily know what we can be applying these grants towards right now. So I think the first process is let's get someone that's an expert in this brought in, and then they can kind of update our staff on what opportunities exist out there and how those might align with our current planning documents and maybe our capital improvement plans.
Yeah.
And then I think from that point forward, that's where we start developing, okay, here's going to be our priority list based on where there's overlap between our goals as a city and what opportunities exist out there.
Yeah. I guess, keep us in mind, I know that there are commissioners on this body who are interested in helping either write grants or solicit citizen comments or feedback that might support such grants for infrastructure in various forms, whether it's more walkable downtown or it's et cetera, et cetera, infrastructure that we might be able to apply for with federal funds. I think we'd love to help, and maybe we could either give some time or help write the grant or just meet up with this person and try to connect them with some other citizens in the city who could also help, so.
I think that's a great idea. I will keep that in mind and pass it along to city administration.
Awesome, thanks, Jordan. My last question was for that EPA drinking water funding source thing, is that ever something where we could apply for funds to extend water and sewer lines to the areas in the city that currently are unmet?
You know, I don't really feel comfortable answering that because I just frankly do not know.
Yeah, I don't know either.
But I think it's a great, a great point that should be explored, but I would be happy to get the answers on that and get back to you.
Thank you.
Quick, get in the bus.
Yeah, anyone, any other questions for Jordan? And then without that, and seeing any, John, the, our Economic Development and Planning Director, please do have any, any good words for us.
Sure, a couple things to share with you. One, I'll start with a note I got from our acting clerk, Breck. And so she is stressing that your deadline is coming up for getting your APAC reporting done. It's April 15th, and she said she did receive one submission so far, but remember, when you do submit, you also need to copy her. So shoot her a copy if you haven't already, Tom. And so, yeah, for the rest of you, please get your applications in. She stresses that there is actually a penalty. I don't know if the state has ever issued a fine or a penalty, but she has brought that up, so I just want to share that with you. And then second, there is likely to be a joint work session between the council and the Planning and Zoning Commission on the 23rd of this month. It's tentative, and we will, as that gets finalized, or when it gets finalized, I will let you know, you'll get an invitation. But the purpose of that would be to share the similar information that you received at your last couple work sessions with regard to the downtown land uses, those types of things, to have a coordinated discussion with city council on the same thing. So Stephanie and I had a nice meeting with Mayor. He was fully supportive of this concept to get both groups together and be able to talk about how downtown is changing, what are some of the factors that are influencing our development, some of the things that we covered in our meetings, but the council hasn't had the opportunity to hear that. And so what that would do, or what we're hoping, is that by that date, by the 23rd, we will also have word from EDA, as Jordan mentioned, and hopefully have some idea of whether we're going to get a large grant to do some serious planning. If in fact we do get that grant, it will provide us then some level of direction, and it would give us an opportunity to perhaps even narrow further than what we did as a commission and looking at that broad downtown area, maybe to even a more narrow area. So I will keep you posted on that, but I wanted to share that with you, so if your calendars are open on the 23rd, typically, the council meets in the work sessions prior to their meeting. So their meetings are at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, and I would anticipate this would probably be a 5:00 o'clock meeting or a 4:30, or something to that effect, but like I say, I'll let you guys know as soon as we nail it down.
The grant that we're going to be looking to hopefully find, is that 4/22, 2022, applied 4/22 in 2022?
Well, there's a few different scenarios. One is we've already applied for one grant, the EDA grant, and in our application to them, we indicated that we would have been ready to go in January of 2022. That's come and gone here in March. If it is awarded, we don't know the timing of it, you know, we don't know what kind of additional hoops might have to be jumped through to get the dollars on the table. And then the dollars that, or the grants that Jordan mentioned, that's a whole nother set of federal funding that is likely to become available in the next five years, and it could become available in different, in different times, you know, different times or timing. The scenario, we don't know yet. Some of the programs, they haven't, you know, written administrative rules, they haven't written guidelines or notices of the funding opportunities. It remains to be seen. The guidebook that they put out for these federal grants so far is almost 500 pages. That's the guidebook.
This is an expert in navigating that.
Exactly, yeah, right. So we're trying to keep a close eye on it, and hopefully that RFP for a grant writer and researcher will come in handy to help us identify the appropriate pots of money and put it towards our priorities. I also wanted to share with you that, and I can't recall if I've done this already, but the annual APA or the Alaska Chapter of the APA, their conference is coming up here in a couple, three weeks. And so either Jen or I or both will be sending you an email tomorrow sharing with you the details of the program, how to register. We do have funding, so if you would like to go, just let Jen or myself know that you want to go, and we will get you registered. It's a virtual-only conference this year, but it's usually a two-day conference, and we'll share all the details with you tomorrow on that.
Do you have a title?
It's the Alaska Chapter of the American Planning Association. So it's usually a two-day event with folks like yourself from other parts of the state, the planning commissioners, planners, people in local government that just have an interest, and they talk about similar types of issues that you guys see here at the local level. We found out today that our annexation appeal will be heard next week Thursday at 2:30 PM, and that'll be on Zoom, we believe, and there too, if there's an interest. When we get the details or a link, be happy to share that with you guys if you'd like that. I will just shoot it out. Okay. 2:30, next Thursday. That'll be an opportunity to listen, obviously, but it'll be the attorneys presenting their cases before the judge. So, exciting. And then last, Mayor Whitney was going to be here tonight, and he sends his regrets. He was not able to make it tonight, but he did want to share with you a couple things. One was that at next week's council meeting, he will be making a recommendation for appointment to this body for another commissioner, so we should have one more member. And then he also wanted to share that he will be forwarding two names to the Kenai Peninsula Borough for the city seat on the Borough's Planning Commission. So he'll be sending Charlene's name forward along with Linda Hutchings' name. So then the mayor will have the opportunity to, the mayor of the Borough, that is, will have the opportunity to, you know, forward those names or one of those names to the Assembly for confirmation. And that is all I have.
And Charlene has a comment right now.
Yeah, hi. The comment was related to the work session. That's going to be the 23rd. I just, prior to this meeting, set another meeting for 5:30 on that day. Do you know, have any information on what time it is? I could try to reschedule the other meeting. I have an idea.
Most likely, it would probably be either, it'd be somewhere between 4:30 and 5:00 it would likely start. It really depends on how much time we would anticipate is necessary for discussion, but yeah, please let us know if you can't make it. Obviously, for us to have a joint work session, we need commissioners and we need council members, so.
Right, and I would love to make it, and I just, prior to this, rescheduled another meeting for the 23rd at 5:30. And then I'm looking at the conference, that virtual planning conference, I got an email on that, and that's March 22nd to 24th, so I don't know if that would conflict with the 4:30 start time at all.
It shouldn't. Usually those sessions are over about that same time.
Oh, okay. All right. And I'll get back to you. I can see if I can try to reschedule that meeting to Tuesday.
Yeah, please let us know because.
I will. I'll be working on that next day.
Okay, and anybody else? I know I've already heard from one person, and if you can't make it, you know, at least we can share then that, yeah, we're going to have a deficit and we may need to find another date.
Right, thank you. I'll try to see if I can change that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Associate Planner Jennifer Hester.
We have two code enforcements that I need to report to you, and one's a signed code violation that we're working on, and then another is, we had a complaint, but it turned out that there's no violation that existed. Thank you.
Doing the Lord's work. Good job. Do not envy that work. All right, Commissioner comments? I'm going to start with Mr. Burton.
Yes, thank you. Two comments. First, about the APA virtual event. I thank you for offering the opportunity for us to attend that. I saw the email and was hoping we'd be able to attend that again this year, so thank you for that. And then second, this is a bit of a question that I'm seeking clarification on. So the last month when we had our meeting and we talked about the downtown uses, over the past month, I've been thinking about some of the areas, and one of the areas, which is sort of the unicorn pieces of land in the downtown, is that area right by the river, by the bridge, which is already owned. And so from the last meeting, I learned that, I believe, now, correct me if I'm wrong, part of that land was replatted to basically cordon off the contaminated area. Is that correct?
I believe, yeah. I mean, I can't speak to it with certainty because I don't know the extent of the plumes, but yes, it's my understanding that there was a separate lot that was created that was intended to, yeah, encompass the contamination.
And so my question is, as we press forward, and one of the individuals who is here had discussed the city trying to reacquire land back, and if that contamination posed an issue in a potential acquisition like that, is there funding, like through the EPA, I looked up some funding and found the brownfield grants. Now, is that something we could look into to apply towards essentially a potential acquisition to make that financial acquisition a little less burdensome?
Absolutely. That's, you know, as we discussed here a little bit, you know, we're talking about priorities and concepts and what are the types of things that we might have a grant writer look at. That's one of them, for sure. Yeah, that's one that's, would be on my list anyway, that I'll be forwarding, is there an opportunity to look for funds that would help us do exactly what you're suggesting?
I don't have any comments.
Okay.
Thank you, Jordan.
Any Commissioner comments?
No comments. Thank you. Hopefully I'll be there in person next time. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, we can trade. I, yeah, I'm excited to hear the updates. Thank you, Jordan and John, and I guess for the joint work session, hopefully on the 23rd and maybe another day, if not enough of us can can be there. I will be out of town, but can join by Zoom. And and I'm excited to talk about some of the things we talked about at our last meeting, and I'm just curious, are you going to share the same presentation that you guys made? That was a good one, or will it be that plus some, or just so that we're prepared too to have good questions and comments?
It would be very similar, yeah. It would be a lot of the same basic information. You know, Jen did a lot of research, collected a lot of information with regard to existing land uses and what kind of what we're seeing in the downtown, what we're not seeing in the downtown. So it would be, that would be kind of the the introduction to the discussion, and then, like I say, the the other piece would be, you know, do we have this EDA grant? And if it does, how does that then influence the direction that we go? And so, you know, one of the purposes of this joint session would be really for everybody to have a common understanding, to for us to to receive direction from from council as far as, you know, what we're going to pursue and how we're going to do it. And so it would cover some of some of the old stuff, but hopefully a lot of new stuff as well.
Yeah, and remember, you mentioned that this EDA grant is perhaps for studies for perhaps how to make a downtown zoning district, correct? But also could be used in addition to that plan for some immediate incentives or carrots or other mechanisms like an invest in local businesses or whatever fund that we have for our city. So what, I guess, is, are the parameters of the grant in terms of being able to use it for a study versus some carrots?
Well, the the grant itself has has a number of very specific elements that that are included. There wasn't specific mention within the grant application itself as far as one of the items being the, you know, the development of of carrots to that effect. So that that was not included, but it certainly can be part of our our larger strategy and be included and rolled into that that whole overall design. One of the things I would anticipate happening here in the joint work session is when when we met and talked, you know, our geographic area that we looked at was, it wasn't as large as the entire commercial district, but it was still fairly large when you look at the area that we applied for this EDA grant. The the area that we applied for the EDA grant is smaller still than what we looked at in our in our work session, so it focuses even further. And so I anticipate one of the changes, or one of the things that we would talk about in this joint work session is even a narrower look. And where we were looking, I think, in in a much, I think, broader sense at kind of the the longer term vision, what we, and I can't say this is for sure, but what I'm what I'm imagining is that we may have to do a shorter term vision because we're looking at, you know, anywhere from an 18-month to two-year planning process. Do we need to do something here in the very short term while this plan is developed? And that plan, as you mentioned, will include recommendations for things like zoning and hopefully some some other tools and techniques for us to encourage the types of business that we want to see. So we may need a short-term stopgap. How do we preserve our status quo and and keep things from developing into something that we don't want in the short term while we develop our long-term plan? So anyway, those will be some of the types of questions that we would be considering in in the joint work session.
Thank you so much. Is there anything that we can do to prepare or any other places that we should we should look? The month has flown by, and I have been sort of digging, and I would encourage other commissioners to do a little digging in what's working well in other communities and try and share some examples.
I don't have any suggestions as far as preparation. When we do the announcement and give you an update on when it is and what time, if we have some suggestions on that, we'll, what we give to you at that time.
Thank you. I think that's 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 the end of the official business. Meeting is adjourned. The next regular meeting of the Saldana Planning and Zoning Commission will be held on April 6, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the City Council chambers. Thank you.